Of the city council for the month of February. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance and then we will have the community invocation and Pastor Phillips is here to do that. Please stand. Join me in honoring our national symbol.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we acknowledge your authority in the affairs of humanity and so we humbly ask tonight for your wisdom that the business that is conducted here would be pleasing in your sight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Pastor. Thanks for filling in on a short notice.
Did you just grab him off the street?
Right him off the street, yeah, he was walking down the street. All right. Good evening council and...
Here's the list for the public hearing.
All right, thank you. The notice, the agenda notice for this hearing or for this council meeting has been duly published. Are there any good faith amendments to the agenda for good cause? Hearing none, any declarations for conflicts of interest, individuals perhaps contacting you and attempting to speak to you about anything we might be voting on tonight?
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't believe there's gonna be a conflict, just Mill Road, we have a lot of information coming forward on Mill Road tonight. I travel...
Sorry, what?
We have a lot of information coming on Mill Road development tonight and I travel Mill Road quite often, go out to my farmer's place.
Sure.
Apartment like that, not doing that for...
Oh, no, no, I'm...
...reasons, so...
No, no, no.
He's ever sees my Jeep going down there, that's what it was for.
All right. It's just, I mean, we have, what, maybe a three square mile footprint, it's tough not to go places.
Well, not to visit those sites.
So that carries, takes care of five and six. Anything for the good of the order? Hearing none, with regard to the consent agenda, it's the approval of the minutes for the 25th of January, we have the accounts payable and interestingly enough, there are no, no permits to approve tonight, so it's A and B on the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Henderson.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, thank you, main motion has been made by Councilor Henderson.
I'll second it.
And it's been seconded by President Nebiker, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Hearing none and none, chair rules motion passes unanimously. The next matter is the public hearing, the continuation of the hearing from the 11th of January for the annexation with zoning and preliminary plat for proposed Payette River Estates subdivision. I now call to order that hearing and to kick off once again is the building, zoning and building administrator, Mr. Sullivan.
Mayor, council, good evening. So tonight we have the continuation of an application which is ANN 21-004, PP which is preliminary plat, 21-004, and the application is about annexation with zoning and preliminary plat for proposed Payette River Estates subdivision. The P&amp;Z commission hearing date was October 4th, 2021. The city council meetings have been to date November 9th, 2021, January 11th, 2022, and then of course tonight. The owner, Landmark Pacific Investors LLC, the applicant Andrew Newell with Blaine A. Warmer Engineering on behalf of Landmark Pacific Investments LLC, PO Box 1939 Eagle, Idaho, 83616. The property location is north of West 12th Street and west of Twin Buttes subdivision. The parcel number is RP 06NORTH 02WEST 128850. I'm just gonna go through the application summary and background to bring us up to speed again and we'll go from there. The applicant Andrew Newell with Blaine A. Warmer Engineering presenting, representing Landmark Pacific Investments LLC is requesting approval of two applications for Payette River Estates subdivision. This summary gives a brief description of the applications and what each one consists of. For information on how the applications comply with the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, please look at sections 5, 6, and 7 of the staff report. The applications include the following, annexation with zoning classification of RP 06NORTH 02WEST 128850, a 17.14 acre parcel with the requested zoning classification of R1 single-family residential. This property is located, is located next to the, I'm sorry, this property is located to the west of Twin Buttes subdivision and is contiguous to the city limits. Preliminary plat which includes 65 single-family lots and five common lots. The gross density for this site is 3.78 dwelling units per acre. Lot sizes range from 6,500 square feet to 13,843 square feet with an average size of 6,660 square feet. Open space required by Emmett City Code is 1.80 acres. Payette River Estates is providing 2.04 acres of common open space that will serve all the residents. All roads will be constructed with curb gutter and sidewalk and approved to the city of Emmett design standards. As with all subdivisions in the city, all roads are dedicated to the public and under ownership of the city of Emmett. A final landscape plan will need to be submitted and approved prior to the final plats. Sewer water and pressure irrigation will be provided to each lot, stormwater will be retained onsite within the subdivision. If this property is annexed and the zoning classification is changed to a residential use, it will eliminate the light and heavy industrial zoning classifications for this property. The surrounding properties will remain the zoning classification they currently hold. I also included the P&amp;Z's recommendation and the staff recommendation. The applicant has gave a response to the TIS review comments and they have submitted the new requested TIS addressing the timeframes that was requested at the last city council meeting. The applicant is here and I believe their engineer is also online to answer any questions for you. Do you have any questions for me right off?
Okay, just to be clear, we've had three traffic studies, or three, three bites of the apple. Based upon those studies, is there anything in the record that would indicate that those, those studies show a violation of any Idaho law or city code?
No, they do not. They comply with all our city codes and state statutes. Also, I did not mention a citizen from the public, Don Ferdinand did submit, submit traffic incident reports, which I have also given to you for your review. Thank you.
All right, is there someone else that would testify on behalf of? Come on down, state your name and the town in which you live.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Blaine Warmer of Warner Engineering representing the applicant. We're located at 4355 West Emerald Street in Boise. Okay, at our last city council meeting, January 11th, as Brian indicated, we provided a traffic impact study that was requested by the council at the meeting of November 9th of last year. After discussion at the January meeting, we were requested by the city council to expand the traffic count period from the industry standard of 7 to 9 a.m. and 4 to 6 p.m. to 4:30 to 9 a.m. and 2 to 6 p.m. The expanded counts were obtained and are represented in the revised report that's in your packet dated January 9th. In addition to the expanded traffic counts, we applied a seasonal adjustment factor provided by ITD which amplified the counts by an average of 1.0945. Further to account for future cumulative project impacts, which I believe was also mentioned by the council last we were here, we included trip counts associated with the Skyhawk and Skyhawk East developments as provided in the traffic impact studies prepared by CR Engineering. The inclusion of the above listed items in the report created an extremely conservative analysis of the traffic impacts of this project. With the inclusion of this additional information, the results for project opening year with project peak hour traffic volumes did not drop any of the study intersections below level of service B. As a reminder, the city of Emmett has established level of service D or better as acceptable level of service according to the city's comprehensive plan circulation element. With regard to the traffic incident report information provided by Ms. Don Fernand, we have reviewed all 215 pages of reports and responded formally with a letter dated February 7th included in your packet as well. In summary, we found 12 incident reports or call detail reports spanning from September 14th, 2012 to November 17th, 2021 that were located within the Payette River Estates traffic impact study area. Three were traffic complaint call-ins, five were traffic stops, one traffic hazard call-in, one reckless driver call-in, one bus violation and two, and I'm sorry, and one two-vehicle accident which took place at the intersection of 12th and Mill Road. The report said that there were unknown injuries but also said both seemed okay, so that's what is in the report. My point in listing these 12 area applicable incident reports is they are not indicative of unsafe intersections or road segments that the Payette River Estates project would exacerbate. I stand ready to answer any questions the council may have. Also, the developer is in the audience and they may want to say some words as well as part of this presentation.
Counsel have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Warmer, thank you for the detailed report you provided to us, I really appreciate that. I'm gonna just go over a few things I caught in the report, maybe help me with those two. I seen our company's plan, we're supposed to connect sidewalks and everything like that to help our traffic through the city a lot better. This connecting to Twin Buttes subdivision, is that correct? So there'll be sidewalks from this subdivision all the way through Twin Buttes, is that correct?
Yes, we'll join up with the sidewalk at Twin Buttes, we'll run it through the subdivision to the south and all the way down to 12th actually.
And then, I think there's a 3.78 homes per acre, is that correct? I think it's what Brian had mentioned.
I believe so, yes.
A comprehensive plan talks about 3 to 25 per acre, does that sound correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So this is on the low end of what even our comprehensive plan is recommending?
Very low end.
Yes, right, okay. Couple other things here. Traffic, traffic study was really interesting to me, I pulled up as much as I can, I don't understand all of it, but what I looked at before looked like it was 12.2 seconds before this subdivision put in and the highest was 12.6 after subdivision was put in, does that sound about right? Is that looking...
You mean as far as the delay at intersections?
The highest I could find was 12.2 prior and 12.6 after.
Correct. The, the only intersection that changed because of the proposed subdivision based on the traffic study was the right turn out of Homestead onto Mill Road and that went from a level of service A to a level of service B.
Also, just gonna vent a little bit, I guess, or talk to you a little bit, the prior, the very first thing when it was zoning, they had several complaints from concerned citizens around there. One was traffic came in, I think that two different people concerned about traffic, which I think we hopefully have addressed that. Lots bordering their property, I think you've changed that to the larger lots to support that concern.
Yes.
Irrigation wastewater, I believe you said you've piped that now so that they're not gonna be concerned with the wastewater.
Correct, we're working with Farmers Cooperative right now.
Right. Animal existing on county property now being influenced by this, but I think you mentioned there's gonna be a statement towards anybody in that new subdivision that this is our county property next door so that animals will be making noises and stuff like that.
Correct.
And somebody complained about a forced annexation and the city, I believe our city attorney addressed that that's not gonna be any forced annexation by the city.
No, it's, you have to request the annexation, I don't believe the city does force annexations.
So, I guess in my brain, I'm looking at all this stuff, that the concerns that came forward initially and actually coming up now, do you feel that there are any concerns that have not been addressed yet?
I don't believe so at all, I, I think that throughout this entire process, the, the biggest concern has been that of traffic and we provided the report, we provided the expanded hours which actually was kind of, it created kind of an interesting picture to see what was going on there, but we, we feel very confident with that added timeframe, the seasonal adjustment factor that we added, the 3% ambient growth. By the time you put all these factors together, it creates a very conservative result and level of, we're a long way at a level of service B, A and B with these intersections to a level of service of D which the city here because of what you guys have decided in your comprehensive plan, circulation element is if we had a level of service D, we'd have to mitigate up. We'd have to do something that would create a better situation for traffic, but we don't have those situations.
And again, you included an estimate for Skyhawk and Skyhawk East also in this.
Yes, yes, because those projects were recently approved, I do believe, we were able to get a whole, Brian helped us with the information from CR Engineering that did the traffic reports on those two projects and we added their numbers. Now, most of their numbers affect Mill Road bypassing our project obviously, but they're still, they still needed to be plugged in to see what kind of delays we'd have at the intersections with the addition of our project and again, we were happy to find that it didn't have an impact.
Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the development that would like to speak at this time? That being the case, I will just go down the order in which you signed in, Mr. Stetzel. Please state your full name and the town in which you live.
Harvey Stetzel, Emmett, Idaho. I've looked at some of these studies and the average speed here on Mill Road is 35 miles an hour, that's what the speed limit is, but I also see over here maximum speed limits. It's, the highest one here was 57 miles an hour, I mean, that's breaking the speed limit obviously and 41 miles an hour. It would really be great if we would take care of some of the safety issues first and one of them is sidewalks on Mill Road. We have a lot of high school kids and contrary to popular beliefs, I get up in the morning and I see these high school kids walking back and forth on Mill Road. I am terrified that one of them's gonna get hit and I don't wanna see it. And if I can speak out and holler and jump up and down and get something done that will help that beforehand, let's do it. How much money would you wanna spend on a life? A child's life to me is precious. I don't care how much money and how many homes is going in, let's fix the safety issues. It would be easy done right now if the developers stepped up to the plate and helped out and went down Mill Road with a sidewalk on the side where the wastewater ditch runs, put a pipe in it, cover it over, put a sidewalk on it, it's pretty easy done. Lately, and I have plenty of friends that are driving log trucks, you can count one log truck that goes by in an hour and 15 minutes, the same log truck. It's going into the mill, being weighed, coming back out, going over to Brown's, being unloaded, going back in and being weighed again, coming back out to go get another load. And you say, okay, well, right now that's twice as many trips as they were doing a couple of weeks ago. 129,000 pounds is the gross weight that they can run right now within a mile from the main, uh, state highway. If that's a little further down to the mill, that 129,000 pounds, how far is it gonna take to stop? Let's say they're doing 40 miles an hour, it's not gonna stop in 10 feet. And plenty of little kids run out in front of trucks and cars, do they hear? Haven't seen one yet, I have known that pedestrians have been hit down there and I have seen plenty of accidents at 12th and Mill, even a fatal when I first moved in. And we need to address those problems before we put 650 more cars on that road. You can look over here by Mr. Roy Bacher's house and there's a road that goes down to some storage units and turn and look due south and straight down the property line, probably a quarter of a mile is Highway 52. Let's open it up, get some, and make a road through there. That's gonna eliminate some of them on 12th and Mill and I don't wanna see anybody injured or hurt. That's my big concern and I don't wanna be kind of a thorn in your side, but Mr. Rizinkin, when you last week, or the last meeting, said, well, you know, that's commercial property, we can put a concrete or asphalt company or a gravel pit in, you're right.
I did not say...
No.
I said they.
That's true, okay, but threats is not, we're not out here for threats, we're out here to try and get something resolved and it safely done and done properly. So, sorry for drawing your, right on the, hitting the nail on the head, that's the way I am. If, if I can do something for somebody, let me know. I live on the corner of 12th and Mill Road, as most of you guys know where I live. I see a lot of things there all day long, clear up till about 7, 8 o'clock at night. I've seen cars line up on Mill Road and drag race and one of them was just a few days ago. How, how old were they? I don't know, they were pretty young, I think. But, does that mean that the subdivision shouldn't go in? No, well, I think we need to put curbs and sidewalks in to make it safe for those of us who wanna go out and walk down, up and down Mill Road. Can't do it right now, not safely. Too many log trucks, too many other things. Any questions?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
There's, I appreciate your comments like that and I appreciate all the things you've provided to us. So, if I'm not mistaken, maybe Brian have to help me on this, I believe Mill Road is all county until at Homestead or close to there?
We have the entrance into Indian Meadows, the frontage for the new Skyhawk and then Twin Buttes subdivision. The rest is all the county.
Most of all this county, have you reached out to county commissioners or county road department yet to try to figure out curb gutters and sidewalk down through there yet?
Not on that, but I have mentioned to some of our county officials about the speed in which people travel on that road. I think we oughta drop it to 25 miles an hour, maybe, you know, you think about that. If we dropped it at 25, then the speed may actually average out to be 35.
So, the point I'm trying to make, I think there's some steps that you're doing the right direction, but I think you need to speak with the county commissioners, probably the road department from the county, try to get something designed there. Again, I don't eyeball that, but I believe there's a drainage ditch on your side of the road, is that correct?
On the, yes, on the east side of Mill.
And there's also power poles, so it's gonna be a big undertaking and I know Clint or somebody could probably explain the cost of that, but maybe you could start by putting a sidewalk in front of your home, you know, or go ahead and...
I've got an irrigation ditch in front and down each side, it's kinda like a moat.
Right, but, but on a mill road, you could, you could covert that and put a sidewalk and get that started, maybe talk to your neighbors, 'cause I don't know how that would work with a county, but if they came to you and said, hey Harvey, this is what we're going to do, we're gonna get them all the way down Mill Road, but you have to pay for this, are you up for that type of a challenge?
I'm up for any challenge if it'd make somebody, if it makes our kids safe, but on the same token, we're gonna add 650 more cars on Mill and say 12th Street intersection there and we have these subdivisions going in, let's have them put up some money also. It shouldn't just be little Joe blow me, it should be everybody.
Right, and I agree with you Harvey, I think a lot of the things that I'm looking at that I know of, I don't know how many roads that have a sidewalk on them and I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure I'm mistaken, but like substation is extremely busy and in front of the schools they have it and stuff like that.
Down at Indian Meadows, they put sidewalks down.
That's the city though? That's not county, that's city?
That was city, yeah. So, Harvey, I'm trying to get to, I think you're doing the right direction, I think there's multiple people that need to be involved in this conversation to try to get things going forward. Some things I think that are, I understand the frustration of all the neighbors and like that around this area because this is coming into your neighborhood and changing things a little bit like that too, but there are a couple things that you need to maybe think about also, no additional wells going out there, no additional sepphics being in there. I hear repeatedly about, you know, different development and they're drilling wells and it lowers the water level for your well and you may have to dig a new well. The pathways going from safe bicycle routes from this subdivision out through Homestead to Mill Road, from there they can't go a lot, maybe go down maybe Main Street, but it's at least gonna give them a flexibility of going around that neighborhood a little bit like that too. So, subdivisions are different from different perspectives, but I think there are some good things that come out of those too and the big things I think of is wells and sepphics, 'cause I hear that all the time about all these being developed for different subdivisions like that and stuff too, but I think you're doing the right thing, you're going in the right direction. Mill Road is, I've been on there several times with the fire trucks for different reasons like that. I don't see a large amount of things, I've seen pickups and car trailers parked right beside the road close to your house loading and loading cars off of Mill Road. The other day I was going out on fire, calling there's a county road truck sitting right beside the road and nobody had problems going past them, so there is a wide road there, but I don't know if it's wide enough for a sidewalk, I think that's when you talk to Neil Capps, I believe is the name, is that right, from the county road, maybe get some direction from him, going in that direction would be very helpful, I think.
Well, like I said, that wastewater ditch, in the time, 20 years I've lived there, I've never seen water in it.
The one in...
On the east side of Mill Road.
Okay, right west of your home, just right beside your home.
And there's two irrigation ditch in front of my house. I have piped one.
Good.
But, I would like to, I was gonna pipe the other one and I got from the irrigation company and a lot of yelling and screaming and jumping up and down, but...
Harvey, again, I think, I think you're going the right direction, I think that's really commendable for you and your neighbors. I think unfortunately, we're not the people to talk to at this time about that, the county, the commissioners and county road would be a good place to start, I think.
But, I don't know if you know it or not, but Mill Road is not actually a legal road. When it was put in, this is a little history lesson for you, when it was put in, log trucks were bypassing and going down where Mill Road is. It was just a dirt road but to maintain the irrigation ditches. I've checked this out a little bit too, by the way. And all of a sudden, the mill decided they're gonna gravel it, so they went and put gravel on it and the next thing you know, the county come through and put asphalt on it because somebody was complaining about the dust. And that's exactly the way Mill Road became Mill Road.
Cool.
There is no actual easement that was paid for or went through to make Mill Road Mill Road. Now, it's been there long enough that it's called, I'm trying to think of the term...
Prescriptive right of way?
A what?
Prescriptive right of way?
Yes. See, we got people here smart. Anyway...
Thank you Harvey though, appreciate it.
Just, just think about it, I just don't like the idea of ever seeing a young person or any person hit by a car and dead. Once you're dead, there is no pulling, pulling it back and plugging you back in and you come alive again.
Mayor, I've got a question to you and Mr. Siemens, for you and Mr. Siemens. On 12th Street, we got a grant to put in sidewalk, I realize it's county, but what's the chances on us doing, I realize the county would have to do it, but that's feasible, isn't it?
Yeah, me and this gentleman just talked about it, so yes, we, we actually got an agreement from the county to do the 12th Street extension and so, when we talk about development, obviously there's gotta be a catalyst for us to apply for this, you can't just apply for it 'cause you think you have a problem out there, you have to show that you have some, you know, some development, you have kids walking, you have to kind of proof that out, you can't just send in an application saying, hey, we, we think we have a problem, 'cause every city says... every city says that. We have to have a tangible problem. We have to be able to track that problem and, and see the traffic. So, you know, the engineer on record and, and of course, myself just had the conversation. We talk about it. I mean, our goal is, is to always make it safe and, and we know that development is going to come. We know that development will impact the roadways. We know that children will impact the roadways. You know, development brings sidewalks. That's, that's important, you know, because if we have a place we can, we can break off of, and I, I listened to this gentleman talk about a drain ditch that, you know, he, he could care less about it because it doesn't do anything and all that, but those cost a lot of money. You don't just go cover a drain ditch. You have to build a, you know, a structure, you know, you have to encase it or whatever you have to do. So, it, it, it's not as easy as it sounds, but it's all doable if we can get some money because we don't have that. I mean, this, we're just a city. We, we have a hard enough time maintaining our roads, you know. But if you can get the safe routes to, to school grants and you can go down the LTAC and ITD grants available, you know, they're all possible, but you have to have a reason. Without the development, we don't have a reason. We just have open land out there and it's not going to go anywhere. So, we are looking into that and we will continue looking into those items.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just have a question for you. Steve, for the time we get a grant, because I've seen schools go from Homestead all the way down there, what about the property owners? Do you take...
Well, yeah, so you have to, you have to do procurement or you have to be able to, you know, which the grants don't like to do procurement. That's just the way they are. We have to have right of way and we do have right of way out there, even though it's prescriptive. We do have right of way because that's all has to be dedicated based on growth, right? So, when development happens, annexation. You do have enough road there that if you did put a sidewalk, I mean, the sad part would be is it would probably get destroyed if, if you ever, and, you know, developed the area that, that, you know, the 12th and Mill or anything, you know, now you're going to have a wider corridor because it's going to meet the new standards. But low hanging fruit, you can still do something. I mean, that's why we did asphalt up on 12th Street, because curb gutter and sidewalk would have been another 30 feet back and didn't make sense. So, you know, there's ways to get around it. Do fog lines, do pavement. There's typically right of way to do that. Of course, it keeps people from parking and unloading their stuff on the side of the road, but there still is opportunity. And we will continue to investigate and exfoliate any opportunity to create those safe routes if, if we're successful. So, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Morton?
Oh, you didn't give, give them?
No.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Joe Morton, Emmett, Idaho?
Thank you, Council Mayor, Mayor. This issue is, is not about, greatest concern is traffic, it's safety. If you do a word search for, on the county, on the city code right here, public safety shows up 65 times right there. And that's really what the issue is. I'll reference the, some of the things that were said previously. The traffic, right off the top, right here, the engineer spoke about, or mayor spoke about three traffic studies. Neil, I've been, I've been, I've worked with Neil Capps a lot right there and, and he just published 207, okay, gave it to me yesterday. And if I could hand this out, please, to everybody?
This is the legislature reports right there that, that came off of Mill Road.
And there's two locations. The first location is just south of Homestead where the engineers did one. And I think it's referred to as 801 Mill Road, right there. And the second location was, was 1441, was right there. The little entrance that goes into school as you come off the highway, right there, is where they put the second one. So, there's actually four, Mayor, to correct you on that now, the traffic studies. And, and while we're on that subject, I'll address that right there. So, the total for 18 days, okay, and I'm, and I'm going to use this in comparison to the, to the same study that the engineers put together. There's 17,000, which is 978 a day, which is considerably more, okay, than the, than the, what was noted in the engineer's report. And if you look at the, from the 124 to 128 and then 131 to 24, right there, that's Monday through Friday, and you'll see that those are the, the peak days right there that, that we have. So, if you add up all those ones on the first, you got, you got 5604 and the next, next, next week is 6140, which is about 1,228 and 1121 per day that come, come through there. And I just did some math, quick math on that, okay? Going over, over that right there, if you look at the next column, number of speed violations, you'll see that, you know, it's considerably right there. In other words, the average weekly count is, say, 1,200 right there, that, you know, if you, if you divide it out, you got, you got four times the average speed count, okay, in violations there is, is what it boils down to. And on Monday through Fri- Friday, it's 33%, okay, speed violations in there. And this is, this is the, the counter that Neil has out, out there.
Mayor?
Yes?
Joe, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm missing something here, I guess, because it says average vehicle speed, they're all in the 20s. Is that a code or...
No, no, the second column, if you're looking at 801 Mill Street on the top left, that's, that's the, that's the one right, the same location essentially that, that, that there. And if you compare that report, okay, to, to, to the, to the engineer's report, okay, you know, he's got 735, you know, Mill Street and Homestead Drive, basically. And it was, his report was done on Monday, okay, for the AM and PMs. And, and so, he's got 735 versus, versus the 1121 and the 1228, which is the totals of Monday through, the highs on, on Monday through Friday right there. So, but on Monday, okay, that, those are the numbers you're looking at, okay, just in comparison. And so, you know, it's not, not quite double, but it is, you know, it's, 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 it's there. But the next column, okay, their number of speed limit violations is a key thing right there. So, when you go back and look at the 80, 85 percentile, you know, the average, okay, is 35 on the far right, which is, which is a speed limit there, which is fine. But how many violations do we have? You know what I'm saying? On there. There's maybe some highs and some lows when you, when you, when you look at that. And, and that's the issue. It's a safety issue right there. That's what we're dealing with. And so, I just wanted to address those right there, you know, and, and I think these are valid reports. And then, then the, the other one is, you know, when you, even, even though the engineer's report added the additional developments for Skyhawk and then put the growth period on there, 3% and whatnot, you're still, you know, almost double, you know, based on what the weekly counts are right there. And the, Harvey mentioned, you know, Mill Road and you spoke about the prescriptive easement, okay? I did speak to Neil about that right there and say, "Hey, what can we do about getting this thing taken care of?" He said, "It is a prescribed easement right and they are only required to maintain the structure of the road," which is basically the edge of the pavement. So, so, you know, you talk about adding a sidewalk, you know, that's, maybe it might be an easement for the irrigation or whoever it is out there, but it's, it's a whole different animal right there. Neil can't do it. And when this, when this whole package gets annexed into the city, it's going to be your problem to deal with. And if you don't deal with the safety issues now, it's going to bite you. It's going to bite you big time. And that's what you have to, have to consider here. This is not about traffic or developments. You know, we're not opposed to that and nobody is right there, as long as it's done right. It's the safety of the kids and the people out there. So, let me see what else I got right here. And, and again, I just compared these reports to the, to the engineer's reports that was done on 117 for AM and PM right there. And, and the next report, which was 1448, okay, you know, that, that's the first leg that comes in off the, off the highway and you can assume that a lot of them are turning there on 12th Street to go to the school. You got the numbers in, in comparison, okay? You know, we go, we go from, from the average of, of, of 978 a day, you know, up there at Homestead, okay, for the 18 days to 1,349. You know what I'm saying? It's, you know, it, 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 it's exponential. Then you add another 650 daily trips, okay, for this, this development coming in and out of 12th Street right there, and you got a big issue. You got a big issue to deal with. And, you know, so, only thing I can say, you know, I've got, I've got no skin in the game. My, my deal is, is the community and what's right for the community and for, for the safety of the kids and the people here. And that's what I'm here speaking about.
Mr. Morton, for the, for purposes of the record here, who produced this, what is denominated as a custom report for 1448 Mill Road and 801 Mill Road?
Neil Capps, a few years back, got a grant to get a counter that records this stuff. It's, it's not a, it's not a remote counter. He's got to physically go out there and do it. He did South Mill Road, okay, south of the highway. And I asked him, I said, "Look, you know, this is an issue we're dealing with over here. Is there any way you can do north?" And he says, "Well, you know, I'm just about ready to finish up. I'll go ahead and pull over there." And finally, you know, we, we played phone tag and did a public records request and stuff like that. And he called me back. It was, it was Tuesday, Tuesday morning. He said, "Yeah, I'll send them over for you." And so, that came directly from Neil Capps on, right there at that timeframe. And I guess he printed it out right there. Actually, I didn't get it till 5:00 on an email, but that, that was, you know, 5:00 PM on Tuesday.
And how, how...
Or Monday.
Do you determine the speeds?
There's a machine. It's a, you go down there now and you'll see it. It's, you know, it, it, it tells you your speed and it records this data right here that you're talking about. And it's pretty neat. And he, he got it through LTAC, you know, the thing, get them for the city right here and put them out there and keep track of your own stuff because it's, it's a worthwhile tool. I'm open for any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Morton?
Thank you. I truly hope that you, you consider, seriously consider this. It's not just a matter of, of a development. It's a matter of the public safety. And it's a big issue that's going to come and bite you guys, okay, for, you know, later. Hey, we voted for it, but, you know what I'm saying, we don't want to have what Harvey's talking about. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes. Is, is that Tona?
Councilman Henderson, yes. I was just wanting to know if somebody, Brian or Clint, could speak to the fact that we can only, as a city, make recommendations of changes to city areas. We cannot make recommendations to, we can make a recommendation to the county, but that doesn't mean we may have to do it. We only have jurisdiction over our city streets and city right of ways. We have nothing on Mill Road except for where Indian Meadows comes out onto Mill Road and 20th subdivision. Those are the only places that we have jurisdiction to, to do anything. And those areas, we've already put in sidewalks. We already had the development put in sidewalks.
Actually, Mr. Sullivan addressed that, but he can address it again.
Okay.
Councilman Henderson, you are absolutely correct. That is out of our jurisdiction and we have no authority. We can make recommendations to Gem County, but that's all we could do is make a recommendation.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes?
Thank you.
May I say one more thing?
Yeah, come on, come on down to the microphone.
Thank you. Joe Morton speaking.
I don't know if you guys and ladies saw the recent article that just came out. It was dated February 2nd and it was in the local newspaper or wherever I clicked on it. And this is, this is what it reads. This is the front headlines right there. Idaho, USA. The U.S. Department of Transportation said there was a 15% surge in the traffic fatalities nationally from January to September of last year. In Idaho, it increased 36%, which was the highest increase in the nation, whatever it's worth.
Don Ferdinand? At least state your name and the city or county or where you think you live.
Thank you. Don Ferdinand, Gem County, 783 Tyler Road. And thank you, Mayor, and City Council, and thank you, Mayor, for your great articles. I never dreamed I'd be participating. As, as Joe so eloquently said, you know, it really is about the safety. And I just wanted to say that Mr. Wermer had, I'm refuting that the accidents and incidences that I submitted for Mill Road are meaningless. And this is not true. It shows a trend line that's happening of accidents and incidents on Mill Road, that they're ever increasing. And then the other thing is, I've heard a couple of people here on the council say that, that, you know, during the heyday, that when the mill was going, that Mill Road could handle all the traffic, et cetera. But that was before they put in all the subdivisions. Now, you've got people trying to get in and out of their driveways that live on Mill Road with all this traffic and the logging trucks. And it's just really scary and it's not safe. I mean, and the whole thing is for public safety. So, I realize that it's a pervaded road and that no one owns it, apparently, but you're still, if you approve this, going to be sending way more traffic down Mill Road. So, please, you know, for, for the citizens of Gem County, you know, help us out, you know? Try to get all these things figured out before you add more subdivisions. I'm not opposed to subdivisions if they're planned well. So, anyway, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Ms. Ferdinand? Just have a question for you real quick. So, I went through as much of the, the incident commands, our incident reports that I could do, and there's a big codes in that they do. And a lot of those things were headlight violations and taillight violations. And it, it's not showing that, from what I could see in there, that there's not a tremendous amount of speeders or drunk drivers. It's just enforcement. And if you, it, there's different numbers that were on there, like 163 or 253. Those are city and county officers. I've been a city officer for 26 years.
Right, right.
A lot of officers are working on West Main Street and West 4th Street and they stop at 12th and Mill. That's the location they stopped. And I went through there and there was countless city officers. So, all the traffic that came through there isn't just Mill Road, I don't believe, because the city officers don't patrol Mill Road, I don't believe, chief, as much as, as what everybody would anticipate.
These were county reports. I tried to get the city reports and I sent in a, a request for it and I never heard back from the city.
It's all connected together because it all goes through Gem County Dispatch. So, Dispatch dispatches them all out. So, all what you got was city and county reports. And the different badge numbers on there, that's the distinction between city and county and, and because I, I just knew which ones they were, so...
But there's so many more reports.
There's a lot of reports, but that was clear back to, I don't remember, was it 2012 or something like that?
The only two that mattered really was 2020 and 2021, because it increased greatly from 2020 to 2021.
My, my concern was the accidents. So, I looked at those over pretty heavily and there's one on the 16th, I mean, 310 of 16. It was a head-on injury, but a person got cited for intently driving. It's at Mill and 12th. The other one was at Mill and 12th for angle driving and failed to yield. So, it's not, nobody wants any accidents anywhere. But in the timeframe from 2016 to 2020, that's four years, what I saw was only three reported accidents by ATD. And those three of those, two of those were actually done by somebody just not paying attention when they were turning in the corner, where they thought somebody wasn't turning or they didn't use their blinkers, whatever it might have been. But two of those in four years were designed because somebody was intently driving. I didn't see any citations issued for speed based on an accident injury like that. And again, like I said before, I really respect all citizens coming forward and talking about these concerns in their, in their neighborhoods like that, too. I think there are also advantages at certain points at, too. What we heard, at least what I heard through all these different meetings have been traffic concern, traffic concern, traffic concern. The traffic concern has been, to me, very well thoroughly investigated, documented and documented again.
You, sir...
Yes?
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt.
You're fine. You're fine.
I guess I did, but you've been driving down Mill Road, but you haven't been walking down Mill Road.
No.
And it's horrifying to walk down Mill Road.
Yes, it's a narrow road. Yes, I fully agree with you, yes.
It's, yeah, and with the logging trucks and the traffic.
And I'm not comparing anything. Out in the county, there's not many roads that are sidewalk, Sales Yard, Johns Avenue, out further. So I understand the pain. I just don't think that's possible for the county to do that. But again, like Harvey, I spoke with him, going to county commissioners, talk to Neil Capps from, I think that's a great opportunity to start.
We've gotten the report. We've been talking with Neil Capps.
Great.
And we're, we're asking you, please, let's fix this first.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Matt, is it, I'm not sure what the last name.
My, my colleagues have been...
Okay, all right, all right. And then Don Newell?
Same, ditto.
Oh, ditto. Roy or Marion, which one, everyone wants to go first?
I'll go.
All right. Please state your name, where you live.
My name's Roy Gasparati. I live at 900 South Mill. I'm right in the thick of things. It's not about logging trucks. We've had logging trucks for 20, 30 years. Here's the problem. You're going to add 650 cars on that road. There's a school adjacent to that road. Kids are on the road, walking back and forth to school, out goofing off. You add 650 cars, the number of chances of accidents are going up. I know the city doesn't have a road out there, but when somebody gets killed, the news report is going to say, "Oh, it was an Emmett City subdivision that put this into motion." And then it comes back on you, I don't know if it's just in the press or a liability issue or both, it's going to look bad. An easy fix is, hey, you don't approve the annexation without the developer agreeing to sidewalk the road. Simple story.
Mayor?
Yes?
Which road would you recommend that he sidewalk?
Mill Road between the high school and where it comes out of the, you know, where they, they access the, the new subdivision. Doesn't the new act, the, the subdivision access Mill Road down there at the, the old subdivision? Yeah. Come down, all the way to the high school. Here, here's another issue. You go down to Carberry Substation, it is school zone. Mill Road, school zone. Mill, or, excuse me, 12th Street is school zone. Mill Road, no school zone. 12th Street is a school zone, but 12th, Mill Road out there towards the highway by the baseball field, there's no school zone there. There's kids out there, too. You go out there on a game day, there are tons of kids. Now, I know that's not you guys' problem, but it's, it's, it could be part of the problem down the road when you add the 650 cars that, it's just a matter of time. Every eight cars, according to this, because it's 12%, 12% is about one out of eight, is speeding. The trucks don't matter. They've been there. These guys are adding cars. So you have 650, one out of eight, what's that, another, you know, 60 some, 80, 80 cars? Yeah. That's a lot of more speeders, so. It's just a matter of time and it, I, I don't want to see the city getting sued. I don't want to see the bad press about Emmett and, oh, we should have fixed this. It's an easy fix. The developer is going to make tons of money. He should throw some out in the first place to take care of the problem.
Mayor?
Yes?
So, I appreciate all your information and, and we're not trying to pass a buck saying he talks to the county. We just passed a decision last meeting to lower the speed limit in one of the town, our city's streets. So we're, we're in agreements in speed limits, but unfortunately, that's a different department in the city.
I get that.
So I think that's a great opportunity for you to move forward with somebody else to maybe, because we're doing that, I think other elected officials would probably do the same thing. And Mr. Wermer had explained this in the very first or the second meeting, one of the two. We keep talking about 650 cars coming on, but that was, Mr. Wermer, how many per hour was that? Or it was very few per hour? Or do you remember the numbers you had?
I can talk about it.
Okay. All right. So he can address that because it's not 650 cars coming down 12th Street or, or Mill Road or homes at, at one time. It's not conflating them all at once. It's, he'll explain that, but there's so many at certain timeframe. We do know, like at lunchtime or like that, when the kids get out or after school, the kids put the, probably the majority of the traffic there. But it's very interesting if you hear him explain how that comes down. It's not 650 at one time, everybody leaving.
I get that. And I had a question about that. Is it 650 per day, per week, per hour? That would be crazy. In that subdivision, how many of those homes are going to contain more school kids and get more traffic going that way as well? Add more to the problem.
Well, I think Wermer explained that for us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Marion, would you like to speak?
Sure.
Please state your full name and where you live.
I'm Marion Gasparati. I live on Mill Road. And I know you guys are saying, you know, most, I'm, I'm just hearing, it's not the city, it's, it's, you know, the county and everything, but you guys are coming into the county and impacting the county with city, city housing and, and cars and everything. I just walk and just kind of, you're kind of ignoring Mill Road, but you guys are impacting it, the city is. And it's easy to say, "Oh, the Mill Road's no, nothing to us" because it's not city. Some, the county should take care of that. Well, I can't even walk across the road to my mailbox because it's scary. And, and even on the side, when I stand on the side, getting ready to cross back over to my house, there's no, there's no room to stand on the side to avoid the trucks and the cars coming by. It's just plain scary to go get your mail and come back across the street. I was riding my bike down and when school got out today, and I just felt sorry for the kids that were walking down Mill Road towards the mill because they had their backs turned toward traffic and I just feared for them. It was so scary. The cars coming so fast and, you know, it's easy to ignore that to get, to make people happy and impact the county with the city subdivision and everything. And also, I'd like to say, when we're putting that many more cars in, it's kind of scary getting on that highway right there, turning anywhere. The highway's getting busier and you start putting that many more cars on it, everybody's going to be in a hurry to get on that highway. And it's just going to be dangerous on that highway right there on the, the four corners. And that's all I have to say.
Any questions?
Mayor?
Yes?
Ms. Gasparati, again, I appreciate you coming forward and talking about this tip. The city has put in a certain situation also because what we have a comprehensive plan, what that's a, a blueprint for us of making these decisions for any kind of development in the city. And it gives us all the details of what we're supposed to do as a city to help this community grow in a respectful, nice manner. Every part that we do in the community does affect somebody down the road, whether it be Mill Road or Substation or 12th Street, doesn't matter. Everything that happens in our community does that. We had Skyhawk, I believe, East and West or whatever, was, was approved, and I, we never heard these concerns before. And that was also putting more homes possibly onto 12th Street, too. And then the old mill property was just annexed in and rezoned, too, by the city. Again, we didn't hear any of these concerns coming forward at that time.
Right.
So that's why we asked so many questions at these other past two meetings, is have we considered those influencing this, too?
Yeah.
But the comprehensive plan is our, is our blueprint. Planning and zoning commission, they come forward to us and they tell us, "Hey, this is our recommendations. We have to listen to." And then we have staff. They put a lot of time and effort in this. This was, I think, 175 page, 115 pages of details from them to try and provide us enough information along with the recommendations to make sure we make the right decision because, you know, there's just six of us up here trying to make sure we do the right thing for everybody. City, county, it doesn't matter. And that's why I said, we're not trying to push us off on the county because we did change the speed limit a while back because we felt that was concerned because staff brought that forward. I believe if you went to the county, you may get the same thing. It's just, just unfortunately, you're on that line of city and county stuff. So I don't think anybody on the council is trying to influence negatively anybody in a neighborhood like that. But there are these blueprint things we have to follow to help us make our decisions, too. So...
Yeah, I just, I just see it in Emmett quite a bit, that let's throw a subdivision in and, and forget about the infrastructure, you know, and let's not put any impact fees on these developers or anything, and let's just go ahead and forget about the infrastructure. That's maybe why we have such, so many bad roads all over Emmett. This is terrible. Not even, you know, you can't even keep them cleared when the snow falls, they're all icy and everything. I just feel like, you know, and I, and I just, I don't know where the football field is. Is it in the city limits or in the county?
City.
So, it's in the city limits? So there's a city limits right there. Why isn't there sidewalks there to protect the kids coming off that? That, you know, I don't understand. So we got city limits, county limits, city limits, county limits on Mill Road, so let's just, we'll just put sidewalks where there's little bits of city limits and forget the rest of the dangerous part of Mill Road and then put, and then when the kids come to the corner on, excuse me, on 12th Street and have to cross the road to go to school that are coming from the 65 homes over there, let's just tell them to run fast in front of the freight train and then they might make it. And, and, but it's okay because that's not city, that's county, so it's not, not our problem. So, that's all I have to say.
All right. Is, I've gone through this list. There were two individuals who indicated they wanted to speak, I presume, in rebuttal or something like that. Is there anyone else who is not in favor of the annexation that would wish to speak at this time? Frye? Yes, sir. I'd like to... Wait, wait, wait. Please state your name, where you live.
Martin Frye, F-R-Y. And I have property on Commercial Street here in town. You just told Harvey that maybe he could build the sidewalks out in front, and he's in the county. But when he goes to the, goes to the, to the city, he's going to have to spend somewhere around $5,000 for, for water. He's going to have to spend somewhere around $5,000 for sewer. He's then going to have to pay about $150 a month or more for us to have his trash hauled off and everything else. So you're putting a big burden on him and he's retired. I'm with him every day. He has, he works a part-time job still just to keep pocket money going. And there's, and I'm renting to a fella who cannot afford to pay me $300 rent to place, for a place to park his trailer over on Commercial Street. He can't afford it. But here's all these contractors coming to town and coming to the county who are going to put big bucks in the pocket and they're going to leave. Now you talk about doing things and we should go here, there, never, ever, ever, other places. We're still waiting for some law on gas and oil that you promised a long time ago. The city promised us that we'd have a gas and oil order and said we didn't get it. And we still, so these things you tasked us to go do, we do it and nothing happens. You've told us that when the, when the, Harvey complains about all the noise up here from the racetrack. We're going to fix that. We're going to put fences around it. We're going to cut the noise down.
Harvey, is it still noisy?
Yes.
It's still noisy.
At the racetrack? It, it would, I'm sorry, Mayor, I got a question. What racetrack are you?
Well, with the track that's up to here, where the noise that comes off of the...
Okay, there's two racetracks.
Okay, I can't, I can't tell you.
At the mill, there's also one at the fairgrounds. Are you hearing the one from the fairgrounds? Because the one at the track at the mill has been shut down for over a year. So there's obviously no noise coming from that.
Well, when it was open, he was complaining about it and it increased the traffic there. I do know that. But I'm just saying, for you, it's impossible for the citizen to get anything done. Now, if, I'm glad you brought it up. So what you could do for us is to head up a committee between the folks that live on this street and that were going to be affected by it and the contractors that are putting the thing together, and maybe you could work something out. Because within the problem lies a solution to the problem. If you used to read the paper, we were going to have two acre parcels. And other people want large parcels of, of land rather than being like this. So we need to work on it. So why don't you volunteer for us to head up a committee, come back next month and give a report of what you can work out and can't do, so they know.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
So, just a couple rebuttals on that. Harvey was making the mention about there's, you can't put a price on life. Was it a cost?
I'm sorry, Steve.
Harvey just made the comment about you can't put a price. So that's, that's why I made that suggestion. If he's, if that's a concern of his, if I had a concern like that, that is something I would reach forward. The best concern that I recommended to him was go to the county commissioners and to the road department because that's how you get things done.
I've asked Harvey if he's now furnishing coffee and donuts to the police department because he opens up his driveway for people to go up there and, for the police department to sit there to catch, catch them coming off of the stop sign fast. So he's did everything he can do as a good citizen.
Right. And that, I believe if it did, Gem County Sheriff's Department, that probably parks out there and watches for those violations. That's what I'm trying to explain. This is a county roadway, it's not a city.
I understand that, but it's kicking the can to somebody else. And when the city is developing, and you could not have got this, this, this track in if it hadn't been for Dittman because Dittman had, went out there and put that track together, the fellow from California did that, and then went over, was annexed to the city because they're contiguous.
Right.
His property is contiguous over here. So you do have control of what's happening. You have had control. So maybe we need some good planning. This is a beautiful valley. Everybody loves living here. Nobody wants to be crowded out of the place. And that's exactly what's going to happen. I tell people, I buy about two pairs of Levi's a year, 82 years old. That's what I buy and contribute to the community. And we need a balanced community with the rich, the poor, the indifferent people sleeping underneath a bridge. We need them in the community to make the schools grow and make everything happen. And the way we're going, it'll only be the rich that'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else that would like to speak on, against the annexation? Anyone else who would like to speak against the annexation? We'll go to the developer at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, again, Blaine Wermer, Wermer Engineering. What I'd like to do is maybe go to the end first and talk to Mr., or talk to Mr. Gasparati's comments about the, the volume and try to straighten that issue out. The, the 650-plus or minus cars there, that, that is a daily volume. What you look at in these reports to establish a level of service, which establishes needed infrastructure and whether or not an intersection or a road segment will operate properly, is peak hour. And peak hour is, is, is different. It's explained in the report, but, but you take that, those peak hour counts, you apply a factor to increase it, to make it even more conservative, and you plug that into the formula that is nationally accepted for level of service. I do need to say that if, if, there, there's two issues I keep hearing, and I, we're talking traffic and then we're talking safety. And of course, they're related, but they are separate at the same time. And the, the traffic issue, I think, is completely put to bed by the fact that this has been an exhaustive conservative study that determined that the level of service at the intersections that were studied as a part of the agreement between the city and the developer to, to analyze stay at Level A and B. If we were talking about Level Service D or E or F, we'd be talking a different issue here because then it would affect both traffic flow and safety. But with an A and a B level of service, you, you just don't get that. And so I did a quick calculation for the delta variant between, that sounds bad in today's world. Okay, another way to say that is the difference between the, between the project peak volumes and the, and the project, or the peak volumes without project, if you will, even with that 3% increase, the, the, the highest number we got was an AM peak of, of 14 cars in that[1647.61] The highest number we got was an AM peak of 14 cars in that peak hour. That's just not enough to cause a significant increase in accidents or... And again, if we were talking about levels of Service D, E, and F, then yes, we could have that conversation, and we should have that conversation. So I do want to say something about Ms. Ferdinand's comment that I said that her information was meaningless. I didn't say that. What I said was, and I truly believe this, based on our review and what we did with the report, is that there's just no nexus between these, this traffic information and what our project will bring to the table. While we're talking about what our project brings to the table is with this annexation, as Clint spoke earlier about, and this gets to the safety issue that I talked about, the... We certainly understand how sidewalks can provide a safer route to school. There's actually a federal program I'm sure you're all familiar with called Safe Routes to School. And that program is out there with block grants that are available to communities to be able to build the sidewalks that are needed to keep the kids safe. The challenge, as Clint said, was if you have gaps in your right-of-way, if you have gaps in your annexation versus county, you can't get those funds. And if you don't show a need for those funds through putting roofs, rooftops in your community, you can't get those funds. So what the annexation will do, and what other annexations will do, will be able to provide an ability to get awarded those grant funds and be able to fill in those gaps that you have in the city. You're a growing city. You're... You've got the growing pains associated with a growing city. The issue with the developers, and the developers you're going to see come into this city and have already seen, their responsibility is to build infrastructure improvements within their subdivision and the frontage along their... So when their project touches 12th, like ours, we have to build infrastructure along 12th. We have a very short frontage there, but that entire frontage of ours, we have to improve. And that will bring, and that will bring that infrastructure, that needed infrastructure, curb, gutter, sidewalks, that will finally fill in the gaps for you. The problem is, it takes time. But these developments actually bring that, annexation brings that, and that's how you solve these problems over time. So I hope I touched on most of it. The crash, the traffic crash data, I don't know if it was just crash data, because I didn't get to see what Mr. Morton brought, but what we commented on is what we were presented with from Ms. Ferdinand, and I think that was fairly typical of what you see in situations and roads like these and the kinds of violations that you saw. And I was actually kind of surprised that the traffic incident crash numbers were as small as they were, actually. So that's kind of my summary of what I thought everybody brought up, and I'd certainly be happy to try to answer any questions that the council may have.
Council, have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did anybody else from the developer want to talk? No? Any further comments, evidence?
Can I rebut his rebuttal?
Do you have anything new?
Well, I just... Roy Gaspari Mill Road. On the one hand, he said that we can't get grants because of gaps in easements. Then he went on to say, oh, by putting the development in, that will allow us to get a grant, or that his development will start plugging some of those easement gaps and get some of the sidewalks taken care of. It's got to be one or the other. Is that going to...
He's correct. He's correct. Because they will be coming into the city.
Is it going to be filling the whole thing? Probably not. So then we still have gaps in the easement, so we'll have a little bit of sidewalk problem still not solved.
No, I understand.
And this group has a chance to say, hey, maybe, you know, put some leverage on him to get that taken care of.
Thank you. Any further comments? Mayor? Just a minute. Mr. Stetzel, do you have anything new?
Just one thing. I'll challenge all of you to come by my house at 8:00 in the morning, and we'll walk to Main Street.
Please don't. Legally, that's not recommended. Thank you.
Well, I'm just telling you, even the developers, then they'll see what the situation is for themselves.
We're all familiar with the area. We're all familiar with it. Was there a question down here?
Do I have time for me to ask Brian a question real quick? Brian? So I just want to clarify one more thing. When you send your packet out, do you send that out to the schools and the other departments? And what kind of feedback have you gotten on kind of who all of you sent that to?
It's in your packet, who I sent it to and who gave me feedback. But yes, I do send it to the schools. I send it to the road department. I send it to all of our city agencies. So yes, there's a list of people that I send back, and then their responses are in your packet.
Was there any negative response that came back from any of those?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Developer gets the last word. You're waving? You're waving. All right. So that's it. Anybody else have any comments? Evidence? Evidence, not comments. We've had comments. Any evidence? Any evidence? Anybody else has any evidence? I declare the meeting, the public hearing, I should say, closed. At this time, we're at 8A4, the decision on the public hearing, the action item. Chair will entertain some kind of a motion with regard to the decision of the council.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Based on staff's report and findings, based on the traffic studies and surveys that are completed, based on all the input from the community and all the planned zoning and all that data that has been provided to us, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the following application, ANN 21-004, Annexation of Parcel Number RP06N02W128850, containing 17.14 acres as described in the legal description, Exhibit A, zoning classification of R1, single-family residential. PP21-004, preliminary plat of Payette River Estates subdivision, adopting site-specific conditions of approval in Section 10, and enter the staff report into record as part of the approval. I'll second it.
All right. The motion has been made to approve ANN 21-004, the annexation of parcel number RP06N02W128850, containing 17.14 acres as described in the legal description, Exhibit A, with a zoning classification of R1, single-family residential, and PP21-004, preliminary plat of the Payette River Estates subdivision, adopting site-specific conditions of the approval in Section 10, and enter the staff report into the record as part of the approval process. Main motion was made by President Nebiker and was seconded by Counselor Resinkin. Is there any further discussion by the council? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Mr. Butler votes nay. Are there any abstentions? Motion passes, five to one. The next matter is the approval of the traffic safety supply quote, Clint Siemens.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, I'm asking for an approval for some rapid flashers that I would like to see installed down on the Forest Street and Johns intersection. As we have watched the development of the roundabouts, we have found that they are very successful. The only concern I have is there's still a large foot traffic that comes through that zone. It's very well lit, but with roundabouts, it takes a lot of attention to a driver to navigate through those. And so during research and what have you, you know, obviously, we've lowered the speed limit. I feel very successful with that. And the next step would be to put these rapid flashers up. We have installed two of them at this point up on the substation roadway at Feltham and 12th Street. They light it up, kids use them, and I feel very comfortable that they safeen that corridor for kids to exit. And it also gives kids a responsibility to look both ways, push the button, and move through. So this evening, I'm asking approval to purchase two of those to put at that intersection as soon as we can get them. Any questions for me?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor?
Wait, wait, wait. We've got President Nebiker, and then you're up, Donah.
Are these in your budget?
Okay.
They... I have the money in my budget, but I would actually request from council to allow me to pull out of savings. Mr. Sullivan, with all of the building that has come in, had proposed, when I brought this up to staff, that maybe we allot through council to pull that out of savings to cover these. You know, we talk about safety, we talk about impacts when we get money in, and not that we ever have a surplus, but we want to make sure we're allocating some of these growth dollars to the safety, and that's what we're trying to do. So if approved, I would like it to be approved to potentially use savings, but I have it in roads if need be.
So didn't we come in under budget for doing that development?
We did, and that money will ultimately go back into savings. We pulled that out of savings out of roads, so I'd like to see it go back into roads. So that's what I'm saying. We could allocate it if we chose to, but I was hoping with the growth and obviously the great things that the building has done here, it would be nice to be able to use it that way, and I can keep what money is in roads to continue working on other safety features and road widenings and repairs and things of that nature. So... But we're good either way. That would just be the preference.
All right. Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Clint, wasn't there a rapid flasher at that intersection prior to the construction of the Johns project? What happened to it?
It is the one that we just installed up at Feltham and Substation. We moved it up there...
Okay.
Just because we have a lot of children crossing at that point, and we had installed flags that are very useful, but with the increase of traffic, we wanted to light it up. So we just installed those about a week ago, and they're working very well. So we like them. We have backup parts for this particular model, and they work very well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve traffic safety supply sales quote in the amount of $19,026 for two solar rectangular rapid-flashing beacon crosswalk systems with approval for Public Works Director to sign.
That's actually supposed to be...
We're just asking to approve the amount.
Yeah. That was a... I'm sorry. I'm not signing anything. Sorry. But, okay.
You can sign. It won't matter.
It won't matter. Yeah. It doesn't mean anything.
When UPS comes, it's a buddy bear, son. All right.
Mayor?
Uh-huh.
I know it's not in my motion, but can we depict whether it be pulled out of roads or savings?
Is your motion approving the amount out of savings? Wait.
May I have a question? So Clint, do you want it to come out of road savings or general fund savings?
General fund. Legally, we can do that.
General fund can support any...
No, I'm... I was just waiting for you to tell me that that's not correct, but I believe that is 100% correct, because general fund is not an enterprise fund, so it can be used in that form.
So let me clarify. So in general fund, roads has a part of the...
Correct.
Of the main savings.
Correct.
So are you wanting it to come out of the roads department for the full LGIP account?
No. So in the meeting that we had with staff, one of the questions that Mr. Sullivan had is, can, you know, as he brings in building department funds, you know, for all the growth, can some of that money be used to purchase these? So it would be a general fund savings. Does that make sense? Wouldn't have anything to do with roads.
Okay. Whatever you want me to do, but I want that clarified.
Right, and that's why we're saying...
It is to come out of general...
Fund savings.
The general fund savings.
All right. To clarify, the motion is to approve the amount... $19,026 with that amount to come out of the general, general fund. Is that the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I'm going to give it to Counselor Harris, because she was first. So the main motion has been made by Counselor Sorenson to approve the $19,026 with the amount to come out of general, general fund. It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. The next matter is approval of surplus property.
Counselor, Mayor, before I make the motion, there's one thing inside...
You're making a motion? It's pretty plucky.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to explain something in here that is not clear. Inside of the letter that I gave to you that discusses us doing surplus with the vest that actually was purchased for Sergeant Bertolato, it states that there's both sets, using both sets. That's incorrect. There's not two sets. All it's talking about is both panels that go inside of the vest, the front panel and the rear panel, and the other piece is the carrier itself that holds those. So that's what this is. It says two sets, which it makes sounds like there's two vests, and that's not true. So when we do make this, I want it to be clear that that's what it's for, instead of what it's stating in here.
Thank you.
So persuading to the city's purchasing policy, surplus property, the police department seeks a motion from the council that authorizes the police department to declare the used body armor utilized by Sergeant Bertolato as surplus property. That's what I'm asking for.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the police department to declare surplus property of the body armor that was provided to Sergeant Bertolato, and do we need to determine where that goes to now at this time in the motion?
Of course.
That would be dispersed to the city of Hayburn.
I'll second it. All right. Main motion has been made by President Nebiker to declare a surplus, the body armor that was worn by Sergeant Bertolato while he was here, and that it be surplus to the city of Hayburn, Idaho. And the second was by Counselor Resinkin. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can you explain to the city council about how it was purchased?
Yes.
And, excuse me, the serviceability of it?
Yes. Yes. So our vests are actually paid from a grant. Half of it is paid by BVP, which is a bulletproof vest partnership through the U.S. Department of Justice. And that's how we purchase these. They pay for half, and we get the other half, and we pay for the other half of that vest. This vest specifically was purchased September of last year, so it's not even a year old, and they are... They're good. Their service on them is five years, so it's over four years still left to service of that vest. And I have contacted this agency and asked them about the vest, and they say that technically it's actually been issued, and the owner of that vest is technically the officer, because it's specifically made for that officer. This has opened up the world for us, for all of our officers, because we have, I believe it's seven that we have, seven body armors that are in our possession right now that we have not sent with the other officers, and we should have done that, because we can't use them, and they're just being wasted. So now that we're aware of this, of course, we don't want the officers to be leaving our department, but if they do, I'll be doing the same thing.
All right. Motion has been made and has been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion authorizing the surplus of the ballistic vest worn by Sergeant Bertolato to be surplus to the city of Hayburn, Idaho, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay? Hearing none. Chair rules, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Building.
Mayor, council, again, I have nothing to report tonight. My report will be in the next meeting.
Thanks for the hearing.
You like that?
You like that? Glad I could help.
Well, I can report that we survived two days of audit. They have been here for the last two days, they left today and said everything looks really good. So we'll, we'll have our final report probably the last meeting in March to present. Okay, thanks.
Fire?
Mayor, council, I don't have anything to report. Do you have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes?
Chief, how you doing?
I'm doing great, sir.
Just a question for you. I know there's that gray Tahoe that's been surplus to the, I believe, by the Zillier for a while. Is there any plans with that? I don't know if that's even under our insurance rule still, it's like that?
It's not, no. They are gonna, we postponed the, we canceled the chili feed, and it'll be auction, it'll be raffled off at that time.
This year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Alice, are you on the phone?
Did she join?
Yeah. I hope, no, I hope she's in bed resting. Steve, Police Chief, Steve Kunkka.
Council, do you have any questions? All right, thanks.
You look familiar.
I'm very sorry for that. Mayor, council, do you have any questions for me? Perfect, thank you.
Were you sleeping?
Mayor, council? No, I was just rubbing my eyes a little bit.
nervous around.
It's a little confusing at times, but...
Is that a donut or something?
Do you guys have any questions for anything?
No.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
Well, we want to know where the engineer is.
He's, he's probably at home, asleep.
All right. Well, I've run out of stuff to do, so the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Henderson.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second? It's been seconded by Counselor Harris. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Aye. Good night, guys.
Good night, thanks.